Let's call this meeting to an end. And simply get this thing finished up tonight. Our attorney is white as cousins, and he won't be here tonight. But we do have a couple of special work sessions today. I mean, all being paid, that's it. First on the list is the lost agreement with Hall County.
Correct.
Have all of y'all seen it?
So that would be where the... I actually gave you everything there?
Yeah.
So the distribution is what you're approving tonight, which is this amount here. So if you want to give them a heads up on that.
The Hall County distribution for losses, 1.24% of all sales in Hall County. That's our portion of it, based on population.
You want to do what?
1.24.
So the interesting thing about our population grew in Lula over the last 10 years, but didn't grow as fast as the other cities in the county. So in our case, gain for loss by percentage, we lost by percentage. And interestingly enough, the county lost by percentage, so they all grew, but they did not grow to the extent that the other cities, the Buford, Brazelton, Flower Branch, and Oakwood grew. So this is a negotiated agreement that we've come up with, and the mayor has attended those meetings as well. So the council wants to take that matter into consideration.
Entertained motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I suppose.
The motion made by the ladies, second nineteen, to accept the loss negotiations. All the papers stay high.
Aye.
Any opposed? Get carried, carries. So now we're... We give line to Hall County, actually expecting some later. Just thought I'd solve that. That was interesting. Next one that we're looking at, new voting map for the district. Can I have this one? You can. I'm looking for this. I'll go. It's based on population. And in 10 years, population of Lula changes a little bit. So I thought I might send them like good. Everybody knows Lula. Give us that straight now, you know? Addison Street right here, Main Street right here, Gumbry Road right here. Those are the main roads in back to Hall County and Lula. District one will be on the southwest side of Addison Street, and on the west side of Main Street will be Highway. Except for there's one small section right here. But we didn't... We didn't make this free enough population. District three will be below Gumbry Road, above Addison Street, to the northwest side of Main Street. District four is above Gumbry Road, except there's a little spot right here to make population out of there. And then Spring Street to talk to Highway by Main Street. It goes over Iron Horse. Right, district number five. I think that's everyone. District five is basically Banks County. But it's Main Street on that southwest side, southeast side, and Addison Street on the north side. Yeah, right here. But a little problem down in Ball Building, that's a little square. But population work. District two is Main Street, southeast side of Main Street, southwest side of Addison Street. Except for the park around Ball. So that's what we're doing. You'll have a chance to look at it after later. And the population work are really close. The state says you gotta have no more than 10% difference between the highest district and the lowest population district. And that's what we're using, right, is 7% difference. There's a copy, there's a couple of them handed out to you. The other guy, you know?
You got it. So this is actually an ordinance that will be adopted and be known as 071122A. And that council, if council takes a positive position on that tonight, we'll also put it on the agenda for next week.
Is anybody saying we want to change about this, ma'am? No. Just put on your next question.
So it has to be voted on tonight as well. This will be voted on twice for adoption as an ordinance. You know, sometimes it's state law.
Okay. All right. That's all state law. Entertained motion to adopt the map as it is?
Make a motion to adopt it.
Motion by the governor's committee to adopt it.
Second.
Second by Denise Shocker. If all the papers say aye?
Aye.
I oppose, and if I'm not in my position to just carry until next week. That's still the make. I don't have two votes.
You're good.
Okay. Now, I'm not sure why, just probably. Sometimes we have to consider tonight as special spin, spin, right?
Capital expense that would be underpaid other sploshes.
But have seen all air conditioners to replace them?
So we have a 1997 model, believe it or not. And we have a 2003 model, air compressor and air conditioners that in the last year have acted up on a number of occasions. We've actually brought this to council a couple of times. Well, I think last time we met last month, the air conditioner up front was out, and we were able to duct tape it and put it back together. But anyway, council, we took this over to the finance committee, and they had the opportunity to look at these items. The $9,405 unit is the one that's in the back council room. And the $8,559 unit is the one that serves the front office. So it would be a capital expense. That's not me. I don't know who it is.
Somebody Bluetooth is trying to guess what that noise is.
Yes.
Nature's not mine.
Nonetheless, we had quotes from Jordan Mechanical as well. And Student Pro has done the majority of her work there. So give us a discount. In this particular case, we got a $500 discount on the $9,405, and we got a $450 discount for the $859. So if the council wants to give that consideration, that would be paid at a splosh dollars.
I make a motion, we did it.
Second?
Motion by Denise, second to go ahead and replace the air conditioners. All the papers aye?
Aye.
All the papers opposed? Miss Carries, if you have. Okay, now then we get to... That's all our special call meeting items that we had. Now we get to our regular meeting. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank all the guys, but I still appreciate y'all coming out. And we'll say a prayer, and then we'll pledge allegiance to the flag. That's correct. If you're going to honor, thank the suffering to get together and serve our city. Thank you for the blessings of the day, the coup de grace. Thank you. Help us make the right decisions for the city. The goodness and guidance, the wisdom, and strength. Make the right decisions, as Sandy explained again.
Amen.
Attention. The Lula prayers. I pray that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the best world with liberty and justice overall. Okay, it's time to sit in comments. Let's have comments pertaining to the city items concerning the city itself. Or joy. You got a specific comment you'd like to make?
Yeah, I...
Go ahead.
Thank you. To the leaders of our city government of Lula, the most important thing in life is serving God, your fellow men and women, your parents, and especially children and the less fortunate. The law compels ethical persuasion. Just remember, selfish people never slow. They only want to be served. To the watchmen and women in our city government, our males, councilmen, councilmen waiting, city managers, city attorney, also our city clerks and others that help to make decisions informing and planning how our city should perform. Please don't be misled by anyone lacking foresight to move this city into the future away from the past. It seems there are people in our city and government, whether they lack our foresight or ignorance, or who are trying to persuade you from doing the right thing is better for all of us, especially for our children. They seem to want you to find a way to dismiss the men and women that have moved this city to a better place to live in. Never let their ignorance and lack of foresight discourage you from doing the right thing that you were elected by the people to do. If you spend time with wise people, you also become wise. You need to be with the people that will inspire you. Please don't let... Don't spend time with people who have negative thoughts. Don't spend time with birds when you can fly with the eagles. Find friends who are going to do the right thing. True friends will want to see you go forward to better things in life. False friends want you to stay on their level to make them feel good. Don't be discouraged because things haven't gone your way in the past. We can't give up, but we must keep the faith, and the doors of faith will open. Don't let public opinion and those that have a negative attitude keep you from trying to look and search for better things ahead, especially for your children. If we keep unified, there is nothing that we can do keep from us from reaching our goal and our destination. I personally feel that we need four grand leaders who can make a difference in our community. I want this city to have more resources available to everyone here. We can't let foolish thinking prevent us from moving forward. Please realize that the development that is beginning to take place in northeast Georgia will make a better place to live and work, especially for all you. Let us never forget that mental health, as well as drug addiction, contributes to gun violence and other crimes in our community. Your support will help all people to change their lives. Therefore, when you... When never you see how, know that something is wrong and prevent us from moving a better way of life, it is your duty as officials of our city to make the right choice and make things right for all of us.
Thank you very much, Lord God. I could never like you for that lesson. Anybody else say?
Yes, sir. Chip Horse, 196 Railroad Avenue. I brought this up a few months ago, and I'd like to bring it up again. I had asked a question about the... About a tenth of a mile section of road on Railroad Avenue where it's just straight drop off to the railroad. I don't know what can be done about it, but in the interim, is there anything that we can do in conjunction with the railroad, the county, the state, or whatever, to get guardrails put up right there? Because there have been a few times over the last several weeks that I've had to work in Winder, where that's the way I go to continue on County Line Road, the back way to get to Winder, where people early in the morning are, you know, they're really close to the center line, and it puts me right there on the edge. And it's a little scary. And I'd like to know what we can do, like I said, in conjunction with the railroad, Hall County, or not Hall County, I guess that'd be Banks County, and the state, to see about putting some railing up right there to keep somebody from potentially going over the edge.
I haven't discovered too much information, Chip. We've been looking at that for almost a year now. It's a work in progress. We're trying to get all the engineering done, and one needs to take to fix it.
Okay.
We have not, you know, here, if you please, we have no work in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Citizen comment, huh?
Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members.
I don't know.
Robert Grizzle, 6400 Narromo Way, Lula, Georgia. I've got a couple of comments to make. You know, I had a... My neighbors was like, wow, we saw code enforcement at your house. I think most people around here know that we've kept a pretty good yard for, say, 27, going on 28 years now. He wanted me to... I do think it was tacky that they came knowing we was having my granddaughter's birthday. Most people here knew it was her birthday during that time. That's when he came, and he wanted me to leave him while he was in the pole benders. Leave him in the pole benders, Jeff. I didn't want to do that, so needed me to know that of our code enforcement officer. Now, again, I think there's a lot of people in this room now that I was one up here at this very podium, right here, speaking for code enforcement, but without government overrun and abuse of power. So I'd like to talk about it. You know, one thing is move the truck, the old Ford truck. You know, I'm okay with that. It's on the right of way. It's... No, we're not in compliance. I have no trouble moving that truck, Mr. Ramblets. Wrong, Ramblet. So it'll be moved soon. But the next thing, he told me he had a problem with my chickens. Now, I know it wasn't my neighbors. It was Mr. Gene Gramlet that said, I'm not in compliance.
I'm not attacking that thing.
But chickens are allowed on residential property, first of all, and a limited number of chickens in almost every city in the state of Georgia. You can go to downtown Atlanta, and if there's a residence, not an apartment building, they can have chickens. They are allowed to have backyard chickens. You go to Alpharetta, one of the most affluent places in the state of Georgia, even more so than Buckhead, there's chickens in the... On residential property. Hall County charter, you look at it, chickens are allowed on residential property. Now, my property is unique. I know I've got agricultural and residential. But my chickens have been there for more than 25 years. And we've had code enforcement for most of those years. Calvin, the young lady that followed him. We even had a code... Calvin come out on something wanting us to move something. We comply. Was out of compliance? We comply. Those chickens have been there with city manager on my property, three different mayors on my property all through this time. We don't live in the Communist Republic of China, Mr. Gramlet. You're not a KGB agent. He's running roughshod around here. I know it was him. And when we know who it is, we're allowed to speak it. We've never had an issue until now. My neighbors is not an issue with my chickens. They don't bother my neighbors. Matter of fact, my neighbors like my chickens. This should be the very person, my city councilman from my district, should be the person I should be able to go to for help. But I can't go to that person for help. I can't go to my city council member for help because he's the one reporting. Now, right between us is arguably the worst looking yard in Lula. I've rode around all the back streets. I've talked to all my neighbors. Have you seen code enforcement down there? No. But it says friend. Sofas in the yard, inoperable trucks in the yard, building material thrown everywhere, a second driveway cut in without a permit. That shouldn't even... That wouldn't even be allowed. You couldn't get a permit for to have that second driveway cut in. He's running around taking pictures of everybody's property. We've had a good city to live in up here, a wonderful city. Let's don't let this administration make it different. We're already getting bad press in the Daily Times, dirty politics. It's clear who called code enforcement on, the councilwoman here. That's not how we done things in Lula before. You know, come out and say, hey, Robert, can we do this? Sending code enforcement out to maybe try to do something that... The chickens have been there for 25 years. Everybody... They've not been hidden from nobody. Never has been. Like I said, three administrations have been to my property. Nobody's ever said anything negative about the chickens. But however, again, chickens are allowed on residential property all over the state of Georgia. Maybe because we live in the central capital of the world. I don't know. But those chickens don't get out and bother nobody. I know I'm not the only one that's had a problem with this new administration of our city council member in my district. We think something needs to be done about it. And if something isn't done about it, we'll do a recall. There's plenty of people ready to start signing a petition because this is... The last six months has been nothing like Lula's been. And I've been here 27 years. I know I'm not from Lula, but I've been here 27 years. I'm getting almost the bill in. And as far as to the code enforcement officer, Mr. Doug Forrester, running roughshod, threatening people. I asked him a simple question, and he threatened to cite me for obstruction of justice. First of all, he's not a peace officer.
There's nobody attacking anybody.
Excuse me?
There's don't attack anybody personally.
Well, I'm just saying our code enforcement officer threatened to... He turned that off, please. Threatened to cite me for obstruction of justice for asking a question. Telling me, threatening me how he didn't have to give me time to do anything that he could cite me right then and bring me before a judge. You know, I've got business property in other cities and counties. So I deal with code enforcement. I've never seen a code enforcement officer threaten somebody that they will take them in front of a judge right then because everybody has a chance to correct the situation. They have that right living in the United States of America because we're not in the Communist Republic of China or Moscow. Threatening manners, that ain't how you're supposed to run that position. It's conduct unbecoming of an officer, and I do want to file a formal complaint. Now, how do I do that in the city of Lula and know that it's going to actually be looked into? Because I'm not the only one that he's threatened. I've done a lot of driving around since the since, talked to a lot of people. I mean, it's amazing some of the stuff. I can't talk on hearsay, I'm not going to do it. But fire department being called out to wash a little bit of mud off the road that children got on it. That fire department, as I spoke here against the suburbs, that fire department could be used somewhere else instead of washing mud off of a road. That could be a life endangerment at that time. I think this all needs to be looked into. I do want to file formal charges of a complaint for this. There is no way to be treating the citizens of Lula. I've stood up here and asked for code enforcement, but I didn't ask for something like that to be threatened, for other people to be threatened and feel like they feel in Lula right now. I want this looked into. I think people need to sit back and start looking at laws on the books. So I would like to see a law on the books prior to July the 6th of 2022 at 2:00 PM that shows that Lula and the city limits does not allow chickens. Because like I said, three administrations have been to my property, and there's been chickens there. We've only had one city manager. I'm not calling him out, but he's been to my property because I've called them out because they's been busted water lines, and I'm the one that reported that. I've looked out for the city. We wanted to avoid busting a property, a water line ourselves, so I called Mr. Burgess to come out because I didn't want to wind up busting a water line. A water line, excuse me.
Amen.
Didn't want to do that, did we? I've always been willing to work with the city. I don't think anybody in this room that knows me can say otherwise. I love my neighbors. I love living in Lula. I'm always here to help everybody, and I've always showed that. If you don't believe that, ask every police officer that lives in this city also what I do for them. This is an embarrassment to have to come up here. This whole deal right here is an embarrassment. It's an embarrassment to be in the Daily Times talking about dirty politics. It needs to stop. And we, the citizens of Lula, can stop it. It needs to be taken into consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Robert, I'd ask if you have... If you would put your formal complaint in writing, I can assure you, we'll take it through the attorney, and he'll make sure that it's filed up on.
Thank you, Dean.
And I have something. Y'all know I can't stand for a long period of time. Do y'all mind if I pull a chair? Do it.
Sit right here. I'll do. We can hear you.
Yes. And I'm going to follow along with Rod. Mr. Grizzle said, I got a statement name. Loretta Grizzle, 6400 Narromo Way, Lula, Georgia. Mine is taking pictures or videos of people's property. A lot of you don't know, my granddaughter was kidnapped. My daughter... My granddaughter has felt at peace recently. I will not have anybody filming or taking pictures of my property, especially when my grandchildren are out there. There will be legal matters taken that is stalking, that's intimidating, and causing anxiety. If people knew our situation, there would not be a citizen that's not in our government taking pictures of people's personal property. And I will ask for the people who have these photos to delete them, to get rid of them. Let the person know who's going around to every place, every house, delete the photos. I will file some federal charges if not. There's judges in Hall County who know my daughter's... My granddaughter's situation. She will not be sitting outside and all of a sudden see a car sitting there taking pictures. Do you know the fear that puts into a child who's been kidnapped? And that's all I have to say about this? I was going to contact the governor's office because I'm that type of person who will protect a child to whatever means possible. Well, when you've got a citizen and you're taking these pictures from them because they want to show you whatever's on people's private properties, that's illegal. It's stalking. So I wanted to make that very clear today. I'm sorry the attorney is not here, but I have codes. I have job duties of every member up here at what your job duties are. And if you fall beneath that property and you are allowing people to take pictures of other people's personal property and you're fitting them on your phone, your computer, I don't know what's going on with these pictures. They could be putting them on porn sites for all I know. I want the pictures deleted with my grandchildren in those pictures. That's all I have to say. And I'm very angry, very, very angry. And I better not catch anybody sitting outside my house taking pictures or videos, or there will be some charges filed. And it will go in front of these judges who have protected my granddaughter. That's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, I would do have one more thing. Grandfather clause, even if the chickens... That didn't come in until 2009. Chickens have been there for 20 years.
Anybody else? Okey dokey. Everybody's in a minute. Got a copy a minute? Do you need a copy of it? Sometimes we go on next week.
You got a copy?
That's not the same, but just two of them once or two.
Uh.
One of my... Well, we'll prove this for later, won't we? I just need to sign.
Right, and then Jim had actually... Jim had a work session made, and we had a...
Oh, okay.
Well, so you don't have to worry about the rest until next week.
Okay.
So we're good.
I'm going to sign it here real quick. I warned you, ma'am, you need to get signed, didn't I? Okay. All right, I guess... I said, no, wait a minute. I got one thing here, one more good thing. You ordered the, you ordered the month, y'all got to get, get them picked out this week?
I definitely did.
I'm sorry, if you got no leak.
Yeah, you got them up.
Just let, let Andy know. But what I do, what I do have is the Show Your Colors Award winners. Got Delta Building on the first, I think it was Monday, something like that.
Yeah, wow.
Anyway, but here's the winners for the Show Your Colors celebration. Eddie Everett on McConney Street. Richard Pope on Mountain B Parkway. Justin Brandon Wiley in Morgan Manor Drive. Mr. Critcher in North Hill Court. And Francis Banks in U. L. Circle. That's the ones, one, the. Factory displays and, uh, they got one on credit on their water bill. Now then, let's do the serious stuff. Money time, Dennis, I guess you're.
So we'll, we'll be brief. Uh, good news is bank balances remain constant. You have, uh, three million nine hundred seventy thousand dollars that's unreserved. You have total of five million three hundred fifty-six thousand that's available. Our first official week in our fiscal year and, uh. There's nothing really to report. It's the first week of the fiscal year. It's hard for me to compare everything. We generally run the first two months of the year a little behind. That's not uncommon for governments, most governments actually run behind. Uh, through November, mainly because, uh, property taxes won't have it, but in our case, we don't have them. But I'll entertain any questions anybody might have. Garnet said he'd make up for any shortcomings we had, right?
Yeah, right now.
Right now. Well, thirteen thousand dollars in the hole right now. It's kind of good for that.
We all, we're not agreed this audit.
Yes, I'm just, that's just a reminder for the council. So the council has entered in an agreement, uh, for the audit for the next three years. And we're actually already underway, so the real audit will probably begin, uh, mid-August with a report that will kind of be for, uh, probably the first week of December, that should be done.
Uh, we just took care of the air conditioners. What's, what's matter?
So just a reminder, y'all, we approved those.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, you approved waste management sometime back and then we did that agreement, so we're just reminding. Anticipate the increase will be coming in the first part of November.
It's not, no, it's probably, uh, remind everybody. Right, and the council's saying we're a bit close on it.
Yes, and with the carpet should go in this week. We've got new counter-tops in. Our biggest problem, just like everybody else, is, uh, getting materials, uh, so. Uh, I would wager that we'll be in the chamber, uh, council chambers next month. Because we don't see anything except all the audio visual is being completed this week. Carpet goes in this week and, uh, anyway, it's been a while, but.
We're going to be good.
Yes, it does.
Carter, have you got an update?
So, uh, I talked with, uh, our attorney about that and, you know, we're trying to finalize this because we're having issues with some of the houses. Uh, that either hadn't been vacated or when they are, so we're trying to get a schedule together one day so we can go in. I talked with the finance committee about doing a demolition bid permit. So I will bring that back to the council in August, uh, for a bid, to put the bid out on the street with the idea that we'll. Hopefully, August, if not first, to September, control all the properties, we can go ahead and do the demolition immediately. And that goes back to demolition bids next week.
And the potential design.
So we talked with the finance committee about, we have some conceptual ideas about, uh, how those properties might be improved. Uh, we're going to bring back some design, uh, bids that will give you an opportunity to look at where you want to go with that and give us more direction, so we. Same thing, the idea that we control the properties, then we can begin to consider what improvements will be made and when.
And we got Banks County.
You want to tell them how fun that's held?
Yeah, right. Look, look, the city's admitting here Wednesday.
Right.
Counter Banks County's proposal, because they're trying to rob us. Is it?
Yeah, so.
Can I say that?
So what?
You can't, the attorney's not here.
There's eight criteria.
Worldwide here, right?
That help you decide how laws can be divided. And, uh, I wish the law weighted each one of those criteria, uh, but they don't. It can be daytime population, it can be, uh, tax base, it can be tax collection. It can be any number of items and population being one. So when we had the chance to meet with, uh, Banks County, uh, last week, uh, it became evident, in their case, very similar to what's happened. Uh, with Hall County that I described earlier. Where the population grew overall, but your percentages dropped. In unincorporated Hall, in unincorporated Banks County. Their population grew, but their percentage dropped because Lula, as an example, uh, Palmer, as an example, even Baldwin and Maple. Their population grew by percentage. So if you did it by population, which is what we did ten years ago, uh, then the division would be, uh. County, Banks County would go from eighty-three point seventy-five down to seventy-nine point seventy-five, so they've lost considerable amount. Well, the argument was, for all the cities that were present, was that their expenses have continued to decline and their service levels have increased as well. And so it won't surprise me when we meet Wednesday that we'll hear the same thing from all the cities because we're in this environment that we have now. Everybody's experiencing, uh, additional costs. Everybody's experienced, uh, a challenge to provide the same level of service. So hopefully, the idea is, is we have sixty days to come to a negotiated settlement, uh, with Banks County, and our intent is to do that sooner rather than later. Because we'd rather stay at a court as we can avoid it. But we're talking about a swing of about six million dollars. That's a big difference when we start dividing that up amongst the cities and, and, uh, you know, we're all sympathetic to the cost going up because we're all experiencing that cost, so. Hopefully, uh, you know, this will find a resolution, and I always say, remind everybody, having done this a number of times. We serve the same citizenry, so at the same time, we never want to take away opportunity to provide those services, so it's a matter of. Negotiation to see what serves everyone's interest overall. If easily, you can make it an argument, uh, resurfacing streets, providing public safety, all those things are, are big and paramount. So we're not proposing that those be reduced. We're proposing that we find some compromise that will, everybody's, but we'll see how that comes out. I don't know that Mr. Mayor, that we'll have an answer on Wednesday, but I think it's fair to say we'll have, the county would actually like us to respond on the twenty-first. And, uh, I hope, we can find a compromise between now and the twenty-first. But, uh, I would suggest that it will probably take close to sixty days to come to some agreement. As you know, they were quite adamant about their decision.
And the chief of.
Yes, we have some exciting opportunities here. So who in this room would like to say a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars?
The charter opinion, the charter opinion.
Well, so, uh, we have a loan current agreement of three percent, uh, and we have a balance of eight hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars on the current loan. Uh, with GFA, which is on the, uh, plant and the design deal that we did twelve years ago. So we have ten years remaining on that. And we have an opportunity, uh, with our evidence loan that's point ninety-seven percent interest rate. How sweet is that? Uh, which is taking care of Silver Line I. So not that you ever have surplus, but in this particular case, over that length of time, we can serve and save a significant amount of dollars. By paying off the three percent loan and, uh, borrowing everything that we've already proposed. I think it's right at two point one million on the Silver Line I, because point ninety-seven. So it's a great opportunity. I know finance, we had the opportunity to talk about it. It's the first time everybody gets to hear it. But, uh, the good news is you have monies available, really in your Splot seven, Splot eight account. Uh, and as far as that matter, you have some flexibility, uh, with your tactic accounts as well. You can pay off of that. So what you're going to see from us in the next couple of days is some scenarios to be able to say, you could do a little bit of this, you could do all of from that. It'll give you the options, but clearly, nobody in the room would say, gosh, how can we say that? Well, this is a sweetheart of a deal. So let's see what, uh, uh, we come back in August, uh, there's not a gun to our head, but the sooner we make that decision, I want to be able to communicate that with GFA. As you know, we got the ARP money, which we committed to Silver Line I. Uh, we committed, and that's still going to pay for part of Silver Line I. Well, it's a matter of, uh, taking from one pocket to stick it in there, is really what it boils down to. So what a great opportunity for, uh, council that, you know, financially, you're very sound. You're in a position where you can afford this and save a significant amount of dollars. So we're not asking for a decision this, uh, this month, but we are going to ask that we can have, you know, deliberate conversation, take a position on X month, that will divide the dollars. That's all I had on that.
And we just agreed to all the counter.
Right, get that for y'all.
To the water sewers.
So Lula, I'm actually doing the third payout right now. Uh, you know, it's amazing, you got to make it all add up, four hundred five thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars off by eighteen thousand. Somebody's going to convince me before we sign off on that. Uh, but I thought we'd have that resolved last week. Not anything for y'all to worry about. Uh, everything's fine with projects moving forward. Seems to be quite timely. I actually have a, a construction review meeting, uh, the end of this month. You know, we work payoffs as they come in, so not a concern there at all. Other than that, uh, water and sewer overall, uh, fortunately, our, our amount of water has been using. You know, I told you, we had a number of weekends where we were negative against production and consumption. And that's kind of leveled off, so we're getting some relief every day. Uh, even over this weekend, we had some as well, so. We'll keep an eye on it. And, uh, the mayor knows this, but, uh, we'll probably actually have, uh, the contracts available for, uh, Belt and Bridge well. Uh, I'd like to say we'd have next week, but it doesn't look that way. We've, uh, we're not changing contractors. We're changing the company he's using for equipment, so it'll probably be. In the coming weeks that we'll get that, but we'll have that for you as soon as we can.
Remind me again, when's Silver Line I going to be done?
So we think, yes, December. I'm hoping it'll be done sooner than that, but progress is going quite good right now.
I'll go on the list, I'll go through them. I won't see if it's okay for everybody, just put this off until the, after the election. Do we have a full announcement here? Uh, I don't know if I can do that, because the charge is, I'm not sure how the mayor broke it.
Right, so we'll, we'll talk to Joey about that and we'll get a correct answer on that. I think the concern would be who would be. You know, I guess, and then if you were out on vacation or having, you have.
Good luck with that, right? Uh, special election, I got something to do about that today. Have you read your, uh?
Yep. So we've advertised the special election. Uh, as you're well aware of, and actually tonight's advertised for that as well. The adoption of this map is paramount. Next week, you'll have the opportunity to set the dates in stone, is what it boils down to. So, uh, like I said, we've advertised this June and July, uh, not just this, but a call for a special election. We're negotiating. Uh, and we haven't had much success, and I'm not sure Joey's going to do in the negotiation with Hall County at the council's direction. As you know, we have a November statewide election, and normally, we just piggyback off of that. And I think really, uh, staff at Hall County's been on the baby, is what it boils down to, because I know Joey tried a number of cases last week for us to set up a similar meeting like we did. Uh, during the last city election, so we can dot all the i's across all the t's. But I don't think even today we can succeed. I think it will. So, Miss Mayor, that will be on the agenda, uh, as well for next week for options.
We're, we're out of a little company out.
Yep, and a little on the second time, just to confirm that, confident, uh, figure item. That's one of the things that's safe way before, and then we'll go for next.
And this, this license renewal.
So interesting, we had a concern that was expressed by a constituent about some business license renewals. And, uh, what we have on books and, uh, availability of use, uh, take your business license. What has happened in the past, I guess that currently is, someone comes in and says, I want to be able to sell widgets. And then in order to keep their business going, they come back, uh, and next thing you know, they're not only selling widget, widgets, but they're selling, uh. Toothpicks too. And then, you know, it's a variety of items. And so there's been a concern expressed about, uh, what governments we have wants a permit or business licenses issued. Now, if it's within the restraints of the zoning, we have, we can certainly address that. In other words, we have a district that says you can't sell toothpicks. And sell widgets too. You can sell widgets, but can't sell both. Well, that would be different, but our ordinances are silent on that. We can only go after how the property's owned. Zoned highway business has permitted use, but some commercial business district has permitted uses. As long as it satisfies that, we don't have any other authority. Council could adopt an ordinance or amend the current business license that would allow us to do that. But it's one of those, we just can't make it up as we go. We have to go with what's on the books. So the question was, which committee? And there may not be any further interest, but it's not something administratively.
We don't need problems.
Yeah. So administratively, you know, it's not something I can just, uh, do, so the question becomes. Right. I mean, you can take it as owning the planning if you want to, I guess.
That's my first thought, too.
Well, we're going to have a chance to talk about it together with that anyway, so. Well, that'll be planned. We'll talk about that again when everybody's, uh, ready to talk about that.
We've got one set up for tomorrow, right?
No, we never got a confirmation. Gene sent me a note saying he was good for either day, but I didn't know what day he was talking about and going, and I had a chance to get that to me. And I'm booked for Wednesday as well, so we got Thursday to be, uh. I can't though.
Oh, okay, I did not know that.
Not here, well, Gene sent me a note. He said, I'm good for either day. But I didn't know what either day was, so. And I had to.
I named you.
Yeah. So, let's see.
Okay. So you're going down, right? Try to escape with that again. Martha Morris has a question, question, I have a copy of this video. And, uh, Bannerman?
Right, she'd asked him for Rota Bannerman on an unopened section of road and then.
Mr. Wagoner.
Yeah, best I know she is, we'd asked her as a requirement that she had to bring a survey that identified the actual property, and then, of course, we had a chance to talk about that. There's also the issue of the unopened, uh, street on Carter Alley, that particular section. And what have you said? We'll address both of those on the opportunity. So hopefully, it'll be on the agenda for next month. And I, I told her, without a survey, we couldn't go any further down the road on that.
And, uh, rezoning loss for six, two thirty of Athen Street has been still.
Right, so I'm hoping that we might get some, uh, depends on how many people comment. Uh, but if we get the data back this week, then we can begin to share that data, uh, with the council, and actually post it publicly as well. So the only question I would have, and you may want to wait till we get it to see the size and magnitude of it, is, uh. Do we want to take that back to the planning commission because they never made a final rule on it?
Everybody can work too, didn't they?
Yeah, and then, uh, the idea was we'd continue that meeting, but as Joey pointed out to y'all last month, that's your option, so. But once we get it back in the house, y'all can make that decision whether or not you want to go back to the planning commission for a recommendation. And to work some of those issues out or take it directly to the council, because then we can establish the schedule.
All right. We're not, we can't do it by that.
Well, I could have it by the end of the week. We'll just have.
Really?
Well, the DRI, just to give an example, there's a. Well, the DRI, just to give an example, there's a DRI for Baldwin that just came in. And, uh, like I had it last Friday, but there was only one comment in the entire package. Hopefully, we're gonna be able to generate more comments, so we'll see.
Okay, uh, the Little Bell Hensaw Society meets on fourth Monday. Fourth Monday this month is on the twenty-fifth, is that correct? It's on the twenty-fifth, is that right? Tony's here.
Yeah, that, that looks correct, that's the plan.
Okay, it'll be.
Monday the twenty-fifth.
It'll be here, okay. And the little latest, you know, on Wednesday the twenty-seventh, here, for the legislature. Launching, six thirty, six thirty or something. Okay, all right, Portica. Susan comments. Did you hear me that time? How was this, as long as the last one?
Thank you so much. Uh, I wanna talk about the direct obligations our city officials and our citizens. No matter how much time we have spent in difficult roads in this great city of Lula, whether we are an official or a citizen, we should share the same vision in making things better now, especially for the future and for our youth. Leaders who believe in themselves and believe in others, those who can articulate a vision for the future and the path others must take to reach our sorely needed. We as officials and citizens of Lula must have several powerful commonalities. We must share stamina, self-determination, and yes, we can, attitude, and desire to respect all and power others to challenge themselves in reaching their goals despite life offering choke balls. I want to ask all the people who have a role in making our city a better living, what kind of attitude and vision do you have? Officials at public service usually do what you were elected and assigned to do when you took this position. Please don't let your past control your future, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else?
Me, do you? Robert Griffin, six forty near Moore Way. One thing I do, I'll try to talk to Mr. Bush about how you put something up to a vote, but I'd like to, as a comment about our great Supreme Court righting a lot of wrongs. I'm more so talking about being able to pray on a football field. I'd like to see the Ten Commandments back in all government builders, especially ours. Cause I think everybody needs to read them before they come into every session and work every day. Particularly, number nine, study it, understand it, and see how great it can make our community.
Anybody else? Come on, Chip.
Chip Horst, one ninety-six Railroad Avenue, Lula. Uh, thanks again for opening up for comments for us. Uh, so I have a question, and I have a statement. Statement is, uh, tomorrow at seven o'clock, there will be a special meeting for, uh, the Historical Society, and it will be, uh, at the old jailhouse where the Historical Society, I guess, would normally meet. Um, I don't know what it's about, but I got an email about it, uh, end of last week, and then I got a call from, I don't know where, Julie, Julianne, Jo- Jo- Joanne, Julianne?
Jo Ellen.
Jo Ellen, okay, sorry, Jo Ellen. She called me this evening to let me know that there's a special meeting. She didn't say what it's about, but there's a meeting tomorrow at seven for that. Um, my question, for anybody who's interested in running for cit- for city council, is there, uh, online information that gives you, um, the requirements for people that, um, that wanna see to run? Is that online, or does somebody have to come to city?
Nothing right now. It's hocus pocus. We gotta set the election, okay, we gotta set qualifying time, at that time, the applications and the packet.
But I'm saying, like, so I know, for example, um, I had, uh, applied for and interviewed for the Zoning and Planning Commission, but because at that time, I had not yet been, uh, a citizen of Lula for a year, I was not, uh, qualified for that position.
You were up on election day.
So then, my question is, is, um, if I'm interested in running for city council, and we closed on our house on, or August eighth, does that make me qualified?
Quite much, yes.
So, and then I guess the other thing I need to know is, is District Five open, or is, is that already filled?
District one and five will be, will be election, districts one and five.
Okay, that's.
So, and then the other will be, as the mayor pointed out, it has to be adopted before we can put it back out there. But the charter helps define it, the council can add to that obligation, not likely. So there's not a discussion about that. And then the qualifying fees, all that will be put out on the website. But you can come by and pick up a copy of the charter, and it defines, other than the dollar amount, but we've already, I mean, we verbally talked about that in meetings already, so I don't see any surprises coming up.
Okay, and the, I guess, I make, I wanna make sure I understand this right, that as far as the, the voting, I know that we're, we're changing.
Vote at large.
We're changing the, the districts.
Vote at large.
But as far as when, when will I know?
You'll know that next week.
When, when the qualifying, uh, deposit?
Right, everything will be done next week.
Okay.
And that will be defined, and the dates are defined, and the time of day you qualify. So you'll be, I know we're doing it as far in advance as we can.
Wonderful, okay.
Same law says we gotta do it so far in advance anyway, and we can't do it too early either. There's a window that we actually have to hit, so we'll, we'll keep your best.
Right.
Keep looking at the website.
Thank you.
It'll be there. Anybody else?
I, I have something to say. Hey, Dennis. I would like to say I'm not complaining, but I am.
Give us your name.
Timothy Van Tassel, sixty-four, forty-three, near Moore Way. Um, all I did was refinish my deck, I did not rebuild it. I had an officer, Forster, I believe, came by, he came in my driveway, and he said, um, every time I see new wood, I have to stop. I said, well, that's fine, sir. And then he came up and he was sniffing around, looking, and he said that, um, I believe, and I had a meeting with Mr. Dennis the same time, he said, I believe that, uh, you are borderline, um, you need a permit. Well, at the end of the day, I bought a permit, but I didn't need to. I was told by Mr. Dennis, and I like Dennis, but they couldn't even tell me how far apart my, uh, pickets could be. But I paid the hundred and fifty dollars anyways. And I feel that it was unjust. Now, I know that I could take this somewhere else, Mr. Garnett, you know me. And it was like, I, I feel that I was strong-armed. And I wonder how many other folks are being strong-armed by this guy. That's all I'm saying. Um, I'm a law-abiding citizen around here, and, uh, for the life of me, I have never been treated this way. I had to go see Dennis, Dennis agreed with the guy. I got a phone call the next, well, we're gonna get ahold of, uh, this, uh, inspector, and she'll be there. Well, I went down, paid my money, hundred and fifty dollars, the ne- very next day, law-abiding, and, uh, I was told by the clerk or the lady behind the desk, she'll be there between the hours of eight and nine. I sat there till noon, and this lady never showed up. I had to go to work, I come home at three, it was signed off, as you can see, on that permit, final. The way I feel, counsel, is I was ripped off. That's the way I feel, and I want this marshal to leave me alone. I don't want him in my neighborhood. I'm getting a little excited. Thank you so much for your time, thank you so much. Dennis, I like you.
One, one thing I wanted you to know, so this brought up a couple of issues with us, and, uh, actually, the planning and zoning committee's gonna have a chance to sit down, look at this, to see, to make sure, we're trying to follow the letter of the law, they have the option.
I get it, Dennis, I get it. But when this man comes to my house, and he doesn't know the rules.
Right.
And you don't know the rules, why do I pay a hundred and fifty bucks?
Well, in this particular case, this is where we're gonna take it back to them. So listen, listen, so they're gonna have the option to change that, so we don't run into this in the future.
Do I get my money back?
Well, I'm gonna talk.
Thank you, sir, you're a good man.
Well, we try.
Thank you, Garnett. And that's all I have to say.
I have a question with that, I have that.
Oh, let me get that permit back.
Deck board that I'm about to have to redo, do I have to get a permit? Just, uh, just, uh, replace the one, the systems? I'm not changing anything, just gonna replace.
I didn't understand.
I didn't understand.
Well, Julie, cause I'm a, I'm a licensed general contractor. Some boards on our deck.
No, we call that maintenance. If you're changing the structural integrity, that would be different.
Right.
Okay, if I'm gonna change it, I'm just gonna fix it.
State of Georgia, if you change the structure, if you change the stringers out, you're supposed to have a permit. But if you use the same stringers and just recover them, cause the maintenance of the woods, wood don't last. So you have to change it. It's like in the city of Gainesville, you have to have a permit for a residential roof if you have to change one piece of siding. If you have to take the siding off to put flashing behind it to flash through, you're supposed to have a permit. If you're not messing with the siding, you don't have to have a permit. But otherwise, it's the structural, if you're changing the structure of the deck. If you're adding on to the deck, or if you're changing the beams in the deck, or the posting, thing like that, then you do, are supposed to have a permit. But top cover, because it wears out, it's not something, you know, our pickets, because pickets don't last either, unless you get all steel now, we generally install all steel now. But, um, it's not a permissible thing for maintenance. For the first time, it is.
I don't know building goes as well.
I have to deal with it all the time.
Nobody know the contract of building inspector.
Another thing, a lot of the permits I pull, it's not only in the city of Gainesville, it's for the city of Gainesville.
Thank you, anybody else have anything else to say?
We, I was just saying.
I'm sorry.
That inspector that came was from Habersham County and not Hall County, I don't.
Yeah, she's, uh, she goes around to a lot of, she's inspected a lot, my job's in Habersham County, uh.
She's settled out from the city.
Franklin County, she goes to a lot of different counties, Jamie.
Uh, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Bruce Lane, five six two six Pine Street. Um, I've only got one thing that I'd love for y'all to visit, all right? Noise ordinance. State of Georgia, there is a law against trucks running more than ten minutes at an idle. I live across the street from a gentleman who runs his trucks three, four, five days straight, reefer units included. Now, I can get by with the reefer units, they've got perishables in there, I can get around that. But not the trucks, cause every time they kick in with the fans, all of a sudden, you've got extra noise. We've got three houses with little ones, ours included, with little babies. Middle of the night, trucks running, waking babies up, all right? You're gonna have a lot more of this, once this inland port's opened up. With all the truck traffic and everything going through here, and all the trucks are gonna be parked at these different homes, you're gonna have more of this. I'd like to see the noise ordinance is enforced, if there is any on the books, which I doubt there is in the city of Lula, or visit it, to have some put on the books. And go after these people that are running these trucks all night. You'd think, with the cost of diesel fuel at five something a gallon, people wouldn't wanna be running their trucks all night long, but apparently, he's got more money than God. But, um, I would really like to see that happen. If y'all don't do anything in the next three and a half years you're here, get something put in place, do something, all right? Don't be like the last administration, not do anything, do something about it, that's all I got.
Thanks, Bruce. Anybody else? All right, counsel, your turn, you want to start, Brian?
Yeah, thank everyone for coming, we don't have enough people coming. We need more people coming, but there is a burden. Thank you.
I agree, and I thank all of y'all for speaking up and letting us know your feelings.
I do, all y'all, y'all, need to show us what y'all think, and they want people to come. Thank y'all for coming.
You can have my shot, boy.
I just wanna know if, if what I talked about, the filming, is it gonna stop? Because my granddaughter, like I said, is a kidnapped victim, she's just now feeling comfortable. Not scared, I want to know tonight, there's not gonna be another person, aren't out there taking a picture? I don't care if it's a council member, I don't care if it's white, you know the situation now. No more stalking.
All I can say is, need to call the law to whoever's doing it.
Well, this person is giving you information, so that's what I'm asking.
I can't, uh, I can't personally stop anybody from doing it.
So I need to call the law?
Need to call the law.
Even though you're receiving the information?
I don't receive, I don't receive all the information, ma'am.
Okay.
I do some, but I don't receive all the information.
So this is a private individual, Dennis?
Yes, it is, yeah. I was, I was gonna say.
I don't care who it is, call the law to them, if it was me.
There's someone who can get more of this. Very few people in this town, this is my two cents worth coming at you, very few people in this town call the law. They say, they say things all around town, they grab a maiden, they grab other people in town, they do not call the law. The law's the one that's gonna handle the problems for us.
That's because they won't show up.
Well, if we keep calling enough, they're gonna.
They won't, they've already said they won't. So things like that, they will not come out because they're understaffed. So just to let y'all know, so we work pretty close with all county and Banks County. If you have an issue, I encourage you, like I said, pick up the phone, call nine-one-one. If it's a non-emergency, say that first thing, and ask if they have a deputy in the area. If it's an emergency, obviously, express that. But if they have a deputy in the area, uh, that you'd appreciate them coming by. I've talked to nine-one-one dispatch about it, they welcome those calls. And then let us know, you can, when you hang up the phone from there, call City Hall, legal message. We'll follow up the next day to make sure, one, the officer did follow up, did show up, and two, what action, if any, was taken. So, and that's, uh, the mayor's right, a lot of times, we get concerns and what have you, but people are reluctant to call nine-one-one. Well, I've been at the nine-one-one center, after ten o'clock at night, unless there's a rain or a weather event or something like that, uh, it can be a very boring job. And they, there's usually, uh, a number of dispatchers on hand, and the same could be true, good news is, the same could be true for the officers that are on duty. In this particular, in North Hall, we have six officers available to us, not every day, all day, but overnight, we're pretty plentiful with officers. So if we're having an issue, the only way we can resolve it, you call them in, you'll be kind enough, call us back, we'll follow up the next day. I get call reports, uh, regularly, and, uh, I'm not aware, doesn't mean that I would know everything, but I'm not aware where they don't follow through. If, as a rule, if they get a call in, I mean, it's registered at nine-one-one dispatch, it goes through somewhat of their bureaucracy to make sure that there was contact made.
So maybe also, maybe also, councilman can say, hey, let's not break the law here. Stop going to people's homes, let's stop encouraging it. So maybe if that is said, because, like I said, this is a major issue, it's not a little simple issue.
What about?
And, and no one should ever fear, and, and when you put the fear into my granddaughter, because was a kidnapped victim, I'm angry. So if you can stop this friend from giving you pictures by doing the right thing there, and say, hey, look, I know my job, you stay in your lane of the road, and I'll stay in mine.
And trust me, she's got a lot of free time over her head, and she knows how to get government officials in.
I have.
She's done it very, because of our granddaughter situation, it got fast-tracked real quick. We was in downtown Atlanta in a high rise with a head of defects in a couple of days. But that's, it's one person.
I, I was, I got any pictures from y'all's place.
Yes.
It's one person.
That's your neighbor, Gene.
I've not got any pictures from y'all's place from anybody.
You need some?
Nope.
She'll know, she'll whip up a bunch if we take pictures.
I'm sure y'all never take a picture of your house or none of that.
Yeah.
I'll do the picture issue. You'd have somebody else to do it.
It's the setting out there stalking.
Well...
And which, yeah, which is a total felony.
When they're logging around your house, taking pictures, when they ought to be taking pictures of their own house.
Actually, when they need to be minding their business, because they don't have any business whatsoever going to personal people's residence taking pictures. None whatsoever. They're not a member in law enforcement, they're not a member of any of the government or councilman. And if you can get to your friend and talk to your friend about it, and put an end to it, maybe that will help the situation. I'm trying. Yeah.
That's pretty good.
If this is not the child in question...
This is not the child. The child in question is the one that just turned twelve years old. And I will not have her living in fear again.
Thank y'all, you all showed up, appreciate that. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Like a motion to adjourn?
Gun for adjourn, protect the James Smith. I'll pay your side.
I...
We're going home now. James Smith's schedule's... Move, just like, move now.
You said James Smith.
Thank y'all for your time. Thanks, Garnett. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Dennis.
See you.